I'll rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for our country, please? Thank you. We'll open the meeting. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming. We'll open the meeting with public comment on agenda and non-agenda items.
As we get ready to start in the public comments section, just a couple of things I want to update on. One issue has been an ongoing issue with the books in the register and recorder office. As people know, we've been working on that for several years to get a resolution on that. We have made progress with 2018 and 2019. Those books, my understanding, are into the auditors now and being reviewed. But the real issue has come up with 2020. The 2020 books, we have been notified by the auditors that there are some transactions in there that have some concern to them. It appears that there have been transactions paid to a family member in the amount of ten checks of $1,000 apiece. At this point, the commissioners are turning it over to the district attorney's office and the auditor general to investigate, to see if everything's okay or if there's any issues with it. So because it's under investigation, at this point, we have no more comment on that. The other issue I wanted to bring up is, you know, there's a lot of controversy going on with the I-81 corridor right now with the toll plaza that's going in. It's a proposed toll plaza that needs to go through legislation. So we have another meeting on Friday to get more of the details. So until we have that meeting on Friday, we really don't have any additional information. So once we have that, we'll release some information on that proposed toll. And I think next week, we have a drive-through testing we're doing, right?
At the Hartford Fair.
Yeah.
The state's doing it at the Hartford Fairgrounds Monday through Thursday.
Right. All right. Another great thing. And I guess the other big thing for us is we have two big grants that we're working on.
We do.
Right. There's the...
Rental assistance.
Rental assistance, emergency rental assistance. County's getting $2.6 million to push out for rental assistance. We're just starting to get the documentation on it now and the rules and regs. So as we go through that, we will let the public know if this is to help the tenants as well as the landlords and the utility companies. And then the other one is the hospitality grant. We have close to half a million dollars for the hospitality grant that's coming out. And that should be sometime in March. And this will help with the owners of bars and restaurants. And so as soon as we can get that information all together as it comes out, we'll be sharing that and getting that out to the public. So those are kind of the updates I wanted to at least share this morning so we could...
If I could include something, too. The commissioners have been very concerned regarding the mental health of our community members during COVID. Unfortunately, suicides are unfortunately an issue that we have been confronted with. Preventing suicides and doing what we can is our focus right now. We've been working with the Suicide Alliance Initiative that we have brought back together over the last three or four months. We've done a couple of different programs. And currently, on the first, the eighth, and the...
First or the fourth.
First, fourth, yes. First, eighth, and the fifteenth. We will be doing a series of town halls. We will be bringing in providers and professionals in the field. You can find out more information on our website regarding that. There will be some advertisements in the local newspapers. We think it's important to bring as much awareness and education around that and to reduce the stigma around mental health. We have a lot of individuals that really need our support, and we need to help each other to get through this very trying time. So if interested, please come to the town hall. There will be a Zoom link available. Call an option if you don't have a computer. And as I said, that information will be advertised and on our website. We are doing that with the Advocacy Alliance and the Suicide Awareness Initiative along with the Lackey and Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disabilities Agency.
The last thing that I had, I just wanted to mention, is the commissioners are working on a community vaccination center, a CBC, it's now called, through FEMA, to try to set up a mass vaccination center. So the commissioners are working hard on that. You know, I want to thank my fellow commissioners for, you know, working as hard as they possibly could to try and get this to happen. We've been on the phone with Pima and FEMA and Department of Health and everybody trying to get this going. So we don't have any dates or how much yet, but we are working with our local providers and with everybody trying to get it done. So thank you both for working so hard.
Thank you. And thank you to the healthcare facilities that we've been working alongside of. They have been doing an amazing job with the vaccine distribution. And we meet regularly, a minimum weekly, and it's been a good team, and I thank them also, but thank you.
Stacy, I guess you're the one here. Did we give you enough yet?
Yeah, a little bit. And I came in just a couple of minutes late to miss the first part of your statement, but I will get with you later and review the video. Speaking of vaccinations, I've heard that courthouse staff has been... It was arranged for courthouse staff to be vaccinated?
Yeah.
So and is that like the entire staff?
No, not everybody took it. It was about 60% hit in the courthouse. Most of the people that got it were...
Probation.
Probation, all the first responders, children, youth, offices that are required for the county to stay open.
People that are interacting with people.
Right.
And Stacy, during that period of time, the 1A qualifications have changed. As you know, there have been five different versions. Our providers providing the vaccine have done amazingly. And during that period of time, we're under the understanding that they had completed 1A and we had moved into the next. Unfortunately, around that time was when they went back to 1A before this previous one and said, "Okay, we're going to extend 1A." So then we went back. So it wasn't that at the time we were, you know, jumping the line or doing anything like that. Unfortunately, they...
That's what I'm hearing from the public.
Yeah. So there was no wrongdoing.
There was no wrongdoing. Unfortunately, they have extended the 1A numerous times, which has been very confusing.
There's five or six different new versions of the protocols.
Yes, right.
And unfortunately, we don't get to know what they are until the governor's office can have a press release and they can do their whole kumbaya thing. And then after that's done, the press gets it, and then people start calling us. And we say, "Oh, we don't know what you're talking about." Then all of a sudden, it shows up in our computer, "Oh, here, by the way, you know, we changed the rules again."
And I mean, and honestly, like I put a family member's information into... And that person is, works in the food industry, is an essential worker in the food industry, and still does not qualify in the 1A classification.
Right.
It's frustrating.
You know what I mean, like...
And we wouldn't have had a problem if we were getting our allocations. The problem was they changed the rules on that, too. So originally, the allocations were based on population. We get so much based on your population, that's how much you're going to get. Well, since then, they've changed the rules to population, the number of positive cases in the county, and the number of deaths. Now, unfortunately, you know, our people in this county have done a great job, social distancing and trying to stop the spread. So our numbers, like the other day, it was zero again, you know? And our death rate is far down compared to a lot. So what's happening is they're yanking the vaccine from us to go to hotspots in the state, and so we're not getting the vaccine. If we were getting the vaccine we should have been getting in the beginning, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. We'd already be into the 1Bs and have most of them done.
I mean, I saw that Barnes-Kinsley's social media post the other day, and I think he said he did a great job of explaining what their experience is. And I assume that that's like kind of across the board for our providers in this area.
Now, there are some counties that have received 100% of the vaccine. So I'm just saying, I don't know what's going on, but...
We're constantly advocating, we're constantly... Especially initially, there was some trouble with our facilities getting the guidance they needed, particularly on, okay, we've contacted all the 1As at the time. When do we move into 1B? And no guidance was given. So if you remember, it was on the news regarding schools. That was around that time because we didn't know what was going on. And then that's when they added it and added again. So we've had to go back. And now it's 65 and older and individuals with disabilities, including smokers and people who have, you know, obesity issues. And that's a big portion of our population. But unfortunately, we're not getting the number of vaccines to be able to do those first doses currently. We're being told four to six weeks. We're going to have this plan up and ready to do the mass vaccination as soon as we get the supply.
Right.
So our focus right now is making sure that we go back and get those additions that they added on to 1A.
And I mean, and I love the idea of a mass vaccination situation. However, we also have transportation issues in this county.
Yes.
So we'll have to use...
We work that out, yeah.
We'll be using Tree-Hab and the transportation. But the other thing we're hoping on is, although it's bad we're not getting the vaccine right now for the mass clinic, max vaccination, we're also hoping by the time we get it, it'll be to the Johnson-Johnson, which is the one shot, so that people only have to come once. We don't have to try and do them twice.
And we should know soon. We're being told that we'll have some answers on that within a week. But we've unfortunately been told that, Stacy, a couple of months, so...
We're on the phone every week with the Department of Health. So this conversation is happening every week, and our docs are in a row.
So we've done everything at this point that we have been able to do, yeah.
I'd like to say that I'm really proud of our employees and of our county because I think people have stayed on top of it, and we've done really well. And so keeping our numbers down. So I'd just like to encourage everyone to keep wearing your mask for right now and washing your hands and just be careful and keep your distance and be clean, be careful, and take care of yourself. Thank you.
And if I can just have a minute, we'll just peruse this to see if there's anything that sticks out in the minutes.
We also had a lady turn 100 years old in the county yesterday on a good note, Naomi Krappa. We'd like to congratulate her. The commissioners put together a proclamation and took it down to the family yesterday, a citation. So we had, say happy birthday to her. I've also noticed that the fire companies and different organizations are starting with their chicken barbecues and spaghetti dinners. And just remember, they need our help. Try to support your nonprofits and your fire companies because they need our support and our help. Get out and buy your dinners. Thank you.
In addition to, in addition to, you know, supporting them through that way, like, there is a huge need for volunteers at all levels.
Oh, yes, yes.
For our emergency responders to be able to get ambulances and fire trucks out the door.
That's true. True story. Thank you, Stacy.
People could just kind of step up wherever they can.
Good for now?
Good for now.
Motion to close public comment.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to close public comment, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item two, approve the minutes of February 10th.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes from February 10th, 2021 meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item three, paying the bills.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, to pay the bills for the month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item four, approve the travel and seminar request.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, to approve Scott Ellsworth and Ralph Schwartz, EMA, NE Task Force meetings to travel for seminar. And it's at no cost to the county. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item five?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a contract with Guyet Communications Industries, Plymouth, PA, for upgrading the phone system in the courthouse effective February 24th, 2021, cost of $1,826. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item six?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve entering into a contract with W-20 Cortlandt, New York, for annual maintenance and service on the Vaughan chopper pumps and associated equipment at the Susquehanna County Correctional Facility, effective February 24th, 2021, at a total annual cost of $2,150. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item seven?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the Susquehanna County Local Emergency Planning Committee members for the 2021 term, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item eight?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a contract with Penn-Tella Data Limited Partnership, Palmerton, PA, for services for Ethernet, virtual circuit, and point-to-point transport for 911 connections. One-time cost of $9,027 for the new public safety facility set up for pole attachment and line build. Additional monthly costs for connections, $1,919, paid for with Pima funding. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item nine?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a contract with Shadow Technologies of 40 Fork for virtual host servers and storage for the courthouse. Total cost, $148,225.93, paid for with CoStar's pricing, paid for, I'm sorry, with Act 13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item 10?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Progress Authority of Towanda, PA for the administration of the COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 11?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a contract with Capital Area Communications, Harrisburg, PA, to add microwave, router, antennas, and additional equipment to the 911 tower at a total cost of $410,394.97, paid for with Act 13 funding. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item 12?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve entering into a contract with Laser Ammo USA Inc., Green Neck, New York, for a training room and simulator for the new Public Safety Center. The total cost is $4,619.49, paid for with supervision funds. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye. And I'd like to say something. That is... We'll go ahead, you guys, if you can say aye or not.
Aye.
That is going to be for training for our probation officers and deputies, and that will be a savings to us, and it will be, it'll save on buying ammunition. Instead, it'll be all through laser. So that's cool.
Very cool.
Very cool.
Item 13, I'd like to make a motion to approve that, and it should say CJAP funding, should say CJAP and supervision funding.
Okay, and I'll second that with that change.
Commissioner Hall, motion by Commissioner Hall to approve an addition of $3,016.15 to the contract with the BMC Office Furniture out of Scranton, PA, for additional office furniture for the new Public Safety Center. Additional costs would be paid for through CJAP funding and supervisory funds. The total contract price after addition is $166,832.32. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve 14?
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Emily McHale from the position of full-time field appraiser, trainee, to the open full-time, union-eligible position of field appraiser certified. Congratulations to Emily from us for 11:48 per hour, effective January 29th, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the residual bargaining unit contract. Per the recommendation of Director of Assessment, Sarah Proof. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item 15?
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Levi Schmidt from the position of full-time corrections officer to the open full-time, non-union position of corrections sergeant, shift commander at $18 per hour, effective February 11th, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Bruce Hall. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 16?
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Carl Knapp-Montrose to the open full-time, union-eligible position of recycling technician at 10:25 per hour, effective February 16th, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the residual bargaining unit contract. Per the recommendation, a recycling coordinator, Jennifer Hibbert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 17?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept the resignation of Lisa Holly from the position of full-time deputy warden operations training, effective February 16th, 2021, per Warden Bruce Hall. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 18?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Jeffrey Hindman from the position of full-time corrections sergeant, shift commander, to the open full-time, non-union position of deputy warden operations/training at $41,000 annually, effective February 17th, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to county policy, per the recommendation of Warden Bruce Hall. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve 19?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Anna Sherwood of Springville, PA to the open, part-time, union-eligible position of corrections officer at $14,96 per hour, with a six-month probationary period, benefits according to the jail bargaining unit and the county policy, per the recommendation of Warden Bruce Hall. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item 20?
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the hiring of Marshall Hill-Montrose to the open, full-time, non-union position of administrative assistant, grant coordinator for 911 at $16,35 per hour, effective March 22, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to county policy and government mandated requirements, per the recommendation of Bradley Ellsworth, director of 911. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item 21?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve proclamation 2021-02, declaring March as Colon Cancer Awareness Month. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item 22?
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve proclamation 2021-03, declaring March as Social Worker Month. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a proclamation here. And you said this goes to children and youth, right? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the commissioners' meeting and open the retirement board.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to close the commissioners' meeting at 9:20. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number two gentleman?
Do we have to do the pledge again?
No.
Thanks.
There you go, guys.
All right, sounds good.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Open the meeting now?
We'll let you sit down here for a minute. Situated. Yeah.
That's all right. I'll take it.
I think I'll volunteer, then I'll stand on one, too.
Mr. Wilson and Mr. Lewis, thank you for being here. We'll now call this retirement board meeting to order at 9:21.
There's no agenda items, so it's just a general discussion.
Yep. It's all yours.
All right, kick in. Normally, I stand up.
You can.
Stand on one leg if you want to.
You should know that you remembered how to tie a tie. It was the first time you put a suit on in quite some time.
We look very dapper.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for coming and being here today. I think it's important, you know, we are required to have pension board meetings, you know, during the year, and this qualifies as one of them. And it's always good to have a recap of the past year and look to see what the future is going to bring us.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it's great to see.
See how your crystal ball is.
Yeah. Well, thank you for having me. It's great to be here. I thought what I would do is just talk a little bit about, like you just said, Alan, what took place, where we are today, and then what we think about as we go forward, and just ask questions as we go along.
We had a stellar year last year, so thank you.
We did. We did. It was, look, we did some things right, and we had some things go our way. So that's always, that always helps out. That always helps out. A little factoid, actually. So in 2020, if you were an average-performing public pension plan, you had a return of 10.2%. If you're in the top 25%, your return was 11.2% or better. And that's net of all fees and expenses. So you're in excess of that. So your pension plan in 2020 was a top 25% performing plan. Then the natural thought might be, well, geez, we must have taken a lot of risks. But we actually only took on about 65% of the total risk at the moment. So thank you for saying that, and just a lot of things really went our way. The plan appreciated about $3.5 million. Since we were engaged, right, when we were first engaged almost nine years ago, it was 2012, the plan was worth about just over $12 million in assets. But the liabilities were far in excess of the assets. And quite frankly, through, you know, your stewardship of additional contributions, the growth of the markets, some good investment decisions along the way, your plan is basically equal to its liabilities. And as you probably know, there's not a lot of public plans out there today that don't have a huge, you know, funding deficit.
Like the state?
Like the state, you know, like any state, really. It's really, really unusual. And then, of course, that's great news for, you know, all the folks in your county. It means, you know, you don't have to raise taxes for this particular purpose at some point in the future. So the question is, how do we keep it up? So, you know, when we think about it, I'm just going to kind of glance at page four and I'll jump around a little bit. I think we all know the markets, you know, were up pretty nicely in 2020. U.S. markets did better than international markets. The plan has investments in both. But as you see, we've been overweight domestic, you know, U.S. stocks at the expense of international stocks. That has helped the plan because U.S. stocks have performed much better. The place to be in 2020 was really more growth-oriented stocks. And while this is a bit of an exaggeration, you can kind of think of growth-oriented stocks as COVID winners and value stocks as COVID losers. So, you know, COVID winners, like Amazon. You could not have created a better atmosphere for Amazon last year. Everybody shopped in place. We all earned more from Amazon. The converse of that is someone like a Marriott Hotels, casinos, energy companies. Those are more value-oriented names. So within the portfolio, we had an overweight more towards the growth names. Overweight to the domestic, overweight to the growth. That combination really helped us get those excess returns. As we flip the page, I'm going to take you to page number seven here. Just a bit of a recap of what went right and what went wrong in 2020. Again, we appreciated about $3.5 million. We had the overweight towards growth. We also added positions in emerging markets, and we have a position in gold as well. So emerging markets, right, think of that as generally, you're Brazil, Russia, India, China. And when the U.S. and global markets were going down as far as economic activity, China was actually one of the first countries to kind of rebound. And so your investments in emerging markets helped to take advantage of that. In fact, one of your emerging market positions was up over 40% last year in 2020. So that was a...
Should have had everything in that.
We should have had everything in that. All right. Then we'd be at top 1% of the plan. But we also had a position in gold. And we bought gold really for a couple of reasons within the portfolio. One was we were concerned about, just not the U.S. central bank, but central banks across the globe, right, printing money. That usually creates a good atmosphere for gold. Two, there was a lot of fear, right? COVID-19, hospitalizations, cases, you know, that helps the gold. And so gold ended up being one of the best-performing commodities in 2020. It was up over about 20% for the year. So now, we have a diversified portfolio. Whenever you have a diversified portfolio, not everything's going to work. A detractor from performance was in fixed income. We had kind of a risk-off play, meaning we were short-duration. We were thinking that interest rates could go up, but they actually went down. So that was kind of a negative contribution to the performance. And having said that so far this year, in 2021, that's been a really good decision. Maybe where interest rates are going up, when that happens, the value of bonds go down. So your bonds are less interest rate-sensitive. So as those rates are going up, your bonds are kind of holding your place. You know, today, for example, the average bond is down about 1.8% per year. Your bonds are basically flat. I'm not excited about flat returns, but it's better than being down 1.8%. So as we think about 2021, I put it here on page seven, there's bullet points. So what do we want to do? In 2021, we're looking at lowering our exposure towards U.S. stocks because the valuations have become pretty rich. As we do that within U.S. stocks, we're going to want to increase our exposure to small and medium-sized companies. So we're going to decrease our exposure to larger companies. As a general rule of thumb, when you come out of an economic recession, for a three- to five-year period, small and medium-sized companies will outpace larger companies. So we want to position the portfolio to take advantage of that. And then as interest rates continue to rise, which is, we think, will be the case, we're going to sell off some of the shorter-term bonds and take advantage of those higher rates and buy longer-term bonds. That's the, you know, kind of the play there. So that's the crystal ball sort of, so what I like to do is take you to this tab, and we'll get into the portfolio bit. I am looking at the page, it's called Account Summary.
What number is that?
It's actually page 16.
Okay.
Right there.
Oh, the tab.
Yeah, sorry.
Perfect. You said tab, and I just did it. Sorry about that.
Not the drink. Not, not the drink.
Exactly.
All right. So we have this nice little graph of the allocation. I'm going to go into that a little bit deeper on the following page, but what I like to do is I go right to the ending market value in the lower left-hand corner of account summary, so you see, as of 12/31, the plan had approximately 31.5 million. When you look at that change in market value for the quarter, so in the fourth quarter of 2020, the plan went up about three, oh, excuse me, 2.3 million. For the year, I'm rounding, about 3.5, and then since inception, uh, 13.5. So we started at 12, and we're sitting at about 31.5, uh, million, uh, today. And as I noted earlier, the average pension plan has a return of 10.2%, top 25% in 2020 was 11.2. Uh, we're coming in, uh, a little around, right around 12 and a half percent for the year, so we're firmly in the top 25%. When you look at the following page, uh, 17, it's called asset allocation overview, this gives you a feel for how we're allocated based on investor policy statements, long-term goals and objectives. So we see the actual weight of 35%. Our target's 30. We have the ability to allay the 45, so we've been overweight risk, but we're not way out there on that, on the risk, uh, scale. What I said earlier, we want to take that 35 and bring it back closer to 30 as the year progresses. On the international side, our actuals, 20.19, it's called 20, we're basically in line with the target. Fixed income, 29 and a half, basically in line with the target, 30. Global credit is just a fancy name for fixed income securities that have some element of risk, uh, associated with it. So, uh, we have about a 5% allocation there. Where we're underweight is absolute return, about 4% versus 10%. So basically, we took the absolute return and pushed that up into domestic equity. Absolute return is a great investment to own when the markets are going down. When the market's going up, it's a frustrating investment to own. So again, markets went up, so that turned out to be a, a fortunate move for us. And then in the real assets, uh, that's where we have a little bit of gold, but then also Treasury's index for inflation right there as well, the 6%. So that's how we're, we're allocating. What I'd like to do is take you to the bottom of page, uh, let's see, so page 19, which is this little portfolio analysis chart, little, little graph there.[1521.62]